Down, please. Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. At this time, can everyone please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the sergeant's desk and fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Thank you for cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Carmen de la Rosa, Chair of the Civil Service and Labor Committee. Thank you for joining us today for today's hearing and vote on resolutions supporting the striking members of the Writers Guild of America, known as the WGA, and the Screen Actors Guild American Federation of Television and Radio Artists, known as SAG-AFTRA. Today, we will be hearing public testimony from workers impacted by the ongoing labor dispute with the Alliance of Motion Picture and Television Producers. Following public testimony, the committee will hold a vote on the following resolutions: Pre-Considered Resolutions Sponsored by Councilmember Farias and myself, expressing unwavering support for striking SAG-AFTRA members in their pursuit for a fair and just contract; and Resolution 694A, sponsored by me, calling upon the Alliance of Motion Picture and Television Producers to engage in good faith negotiations that will result in a fair contract for all Writers Guild of America members. On July 13th, after weeks of talks, SAG-AFTRA and the AMPTP reached an impasse, and actors joined writers on the picket lines for the first time in 63 years. There has been a transformation in the entertainment industry from the proliferation of streaming platforms to the explosive use of artificial intelligence. Both actors and writers are fighting to ensure these developments do not erode their livelihoods. The actors and writers have similar demands. Both unions are fighting to ensure their members can earn living wages by raising minimum pay rates and increasing residual payments for streaming service programming. In 2021, SAG-AFTRA actors made a median salary income of $46,960, which is far below the median U.S. income of $70,784. This declining pay is in stark contrast to the overall industry profits, which reported an increase from $5 billion to $30 billion between 2000 and 2021. Both SAG-AFTRA and WGA also want aggressive guardrails around the use of artificial intelligence to preserve their likeness and their writing. However, in negotiations with SAG-AFTRA, the studios have refused to create guidelines around acceptable uses of artificial intelligence. We are here today not just to plead for a fair and just contract, to defend the livelihoods of SAG-AFTRA and WGA members, but also to protect New York City's economy. A prolonged production shutdown threatens to cost New York City tens of thousands of jobs this fall. The entertainment industry employed 101,000 people in New York City last year. About half of those were jobs directly in production and would be immediately impacted by a work stoppage. Moreover, the indirect effects will spread throughout the economy as transportation and catering businesses that provide services to studios on location shoots will experience losses, too. The number of film jobs in the city declined by 2,000 from June to May, and the number of projects in production in June fell to 184 from 254 in the same month last year. I fear many more jobs will be lost in the coming months if no agreement is reached. Fair and just contracts will safeguard the rights of SAG-AFTRA and WGA members by guaranteeing appropriate compensation and a stable work environment. These members need and deserve a fair contract. The success of New York City's entertainment industry depends on it. I'd like to thank the committee's staff for their hard work in preparing for this hearing, policy analyst Elizabeth Arts, and Rhea Ogwosowara, as well as my Chief of Staff, James Burke, Legislative Director, Kiana Diaz, and Communications Director, Frey Nefamilia. Now, okay, so now we will turn it over to our council, who will administer the oath to the first... Oh, no oath, because no admin. We'll turn it over to our committee council, who knows what to do next.
Hello. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I will now call the first panel. Lowell Peterson, Erica Sala, Lisa Cullen, Vincent Alvarez, if you would please come up to testify. Yes.
All right, you may begin when you're ready. Please identify yourself.
All right. I was waiting for the sergeant-at-arms. I'm Lowell Peterson, Executive Director, Writers Guild of America East. I speak in strong support of Resolution 694A. Thank you, committee members, for listening to us at this hearing, and thank you, Chair de la Rosa, for sponsoring this really important resolution. The Writers Guild of America East represents thousands of New York City residents who craft stories for television, for the movies, and for streaming services like Netflix and Amazon. Together with our sister union in the West, Writers Guild of America West, we're trying to negotiate a new contract with the AMPTP you described. The AMPTP, by the way, does include, in addition to the networks and streamers and movie studios, big tech companies like Amazon and Apple. We formulated our bargaining proposals after extensive conversations with our members. This is truly a bottom-up fight. It's a fight about the fundamental challenges that writers face trying to sustain middle-class careers. I mentioned streaming services like Netflix. Listen, they all want to be streaming services. They've invested billions to become the new Netflix. The way that the streaming model works, as you mentioned, has transformed the way our members' work is commissioned and produced and distributed and paid, and it has not been good for middle-class writers. Seasons are shorter, periods of employment are shorter, gaps between gigs are longer, the companies are hiring fewer writers per show and allowing few opportunities to climb the career ladder. And residuals, that you mentioned, have shrunk. For comedy variety writers who write the great late-night shows we like, things are even more challenging. There are no provisions in our contract for those shows when they're made directly for streaming, and that is the future. The net result is that it's become increasingly difficult for writers to build and sustain basic, middle-class careers. And add to this another existential threat you mentioned: artificial intelligence. Generative AI writes things. We're the Writers Guild. We are very concerned that without meaningful guardrails that we negotiate with the AMPTP, these generative AI systems could harm our members creatively and economically. There is nothing in our proposals that is unrealistic or impossible. If we won everything we proposed, it would amount to less than 2% of the company's profits. It would amount to a tiny slice of the company's gross revenues. The AMPTP told us that unless we withdrew our core proposals, the proposals that address this threat to stable, middle-class careers, they wouldn't move on anything else. This was on May 1st, and here we are, fully three months later, and the companies have not changed their position one iota. We at the Writers Guild remain ready, willing, and able to negotiate about all of the issues that need to be addressed. As you mentioned, the stakes for the city of New York are high. The film and television industry is a core driver of the New York City economy. The Mayor's Office of Media Entertainment estimates hundreds of thousands of people work here in the course of years, billions of dollars in economic activity and wages. None of this would be possible without writers, or I might add, without actors. If people can't make a living writing scripts, then scripts won't get written. The company's intransigence, therefore, is a threat to the whole industry and, therefore, to the city's economy. We at the Writers Guild want to get the industry back to work. Resolution 694A calls on the companies to negotiate a fair deal, and that's all we want: a fair deal that addresses the needs that our members have identified themselves. We are here. We are ready to negotiate, and we deeply appreciate your support. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Takeuchi-Cullen. I am a TV writer, and I am Vice President of the Writers Guild of America East. Today marks three months, or 14 weeks, or 90 days since the start of our strike. For three months, our thousands of members have foregone an income to fight for what we deserve. For 14 weeks, our members have braved the heat and the humidity to walk the picket line on the streets of this city. For 90 days... Guys, I have three minutes. For 90 days, we've lain awake at night, wondering if we'll ever get our beloved and hard-won careers back, if we will ever again get a paycheck for writing. And for all that time, the studios have not called us. For all that time, they have not once picked up the phone to invite us back to the bargaining table. Instead, they scold us. Bob Iger, CEO of Disney, said we were being unreasonable, that we didn't understand the business. They underestimate us. David Zaslove, CEO of Warner Brothers Discovery, said writers would return to our jobs out of a love of work. They threaten us. One studio executive told a trade publication that the end game was to keep us on strike until we lost our homes. Once we were homeless, then we'd return and take whatever contract they offered. And that's where they are wrong. I've talked to hundreds of our members. I see them out on the picket line every day, in the sun, in the rain, in the humidity, and our resolve has never been stronger. But we could use your help. Hollywood loves New York. They love to set their TV shows and their movies here, creating hundreds of thousands of jobs, from electricians to camera operators to the guy who makes the tuna sandwiches for Kraftie. Resolutions like this send a strong message.
Okay, so we have rules in the chamber. We don't clap in the chamber. We do this in solidarity with our hearing-impaired neighbors. And if you don't agree with something or don't like it, you can do this. That's good. Thank you.
Resolutions like this one send a strong message to studios that this city is on the side of the workers. And you, our elected leaders, demand that the big tech companies and Hollywood studios come back to the table and give us the contract we need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to Councilmember de la Rosa and to this committee for having us here today and for putting forward this resolution. My name is Erica Sala. I'm a television writer. I'm a member of the council. I serve on the council for the WGA East. I'm a member of our negotiating committee, and I'm a proud New Yorker. I came to New York to be a playwright, but very quickly I realized that it was impossible to make a living only writing for the theater. So like so many playwrights before me, I turned to TV. And at the time, I saw it as a way to do what I love, write drama, and to make a good enough living to live in the city that I love, New York. And at once, I joined this union that assures me a livable wage and provides my health care and a pension. But that was 10 years ago. And over the past 10 years, as the move to streaming has upended the way the television is written and produced and distributed, I've watched it get harder and harder for members of our union to sustain their careers, let alone a middle-class life. Because despite record profits, the studios continue to find more and more ways to pay us less and less. They squeeze countless free drafts out of screenwriters. They refuse minimum pay guarantees for our comedy and variety writers working in streaming, and they hire fewer TV writers for a fraction of the weeks that they used to. In short, we're being asked to do the same work that we have always done, but we're being forced to do it in less time, for less money, and with fewer of our fellow writers working alongside us. It's a familiar labor story, right? Large companies want to squeeze as much work as they can out of the smallest number of employees they can get away with. But that's what unions are for. We will not and we cannot let them do it. So this year, we went into our negotiations with the AMPTP armed with proposals to fix this: ways to guarantee our writers the same stability that they've enjoyed for decades before the move to streaming, and ways to protect the existence of our jobs in the face of changing technology. But the companies showed us that they were not interested in protecting their workforce. They flat-out rejected our demand for a minimum staff size in television writers' rooms, and they refused to engage in any conversations about protections against AI. And in those refusals, they showed us their hand. They want to turn the career of writing into just another gig. They don't care if the product suffers or if it costs people their livelihoods. If it saves them money, they'll do it. And that's why 11,500 members of the Writers Guild of America's East and West have been on strike for the past 90 days. As Lisa mentioned, David Zaslove said that a love of work would bring us back, but he's wrong. A love of work is what's keeping us out on the picket lines, because we do love our work and we want to be able to keep doing it. We're not just fighting for better wages. We are fighting for better wages, but we're also fighting for the very survival of our industry. We're fighting for our members' careers to continue to exist, to not be downsized until one or two overworked writers are struck trying to humanize some AI-plagiarized script that the studios want to call art. We know we'll win this fight, but we also know that the longer the studios refuse to take our very reasonable demands seriously, the more our members suffer, as do the hundreds of thousands of other workers in our industry, as does this city's economy, all while the studios continue to brag to their shareholders about record profits. We all need the studios to come back to the table, and we thank you for urging them to do so.
Good afternoon, Chair de la Rosa and members of the Council's Committee on Civil Service and Labor. My name is Vincent Alvarez and I'm President of the New York City Central Labor Council, AFLCAO, the nation's largest regional labor federation representing more than 1 million workers from every sector of the New York City economy. I'm here to testify in support of the striking union members of the WGA and SAG-AFTRA. As you know, approximately 170,000 members of the WGA and SAG-AFTRA are on strike because the Alliance of Motion Picture and Television Producers has refused to negotiate in good faith and meet their demands. The AMPTP's refusal to negotiate a fair deal on key proposals, including wages, residuals, and the use of artificial intelligence, is particularly egregious when it has continued to amass close to $30 billion in profits every year since 2017. Currently, 87%, 87% of SAG-AFTRA members make less than approximately $26,000 a year they need to qualify for health insurance. For Writers Guild of America members, close to half of their members are being paid the minimum rate, and writer pay has decreased by 23% over the last 10 years when inflation is factored in. Thus, many members from both unions are not making a living wage despite the enormous profits that the AMPTP is generating. While streaming has continued to increase in popularity, it has unfortunately led to a drastic decrease in pay for both actors and writers. Traditionally, if a show was syndicated or sold overseas, workers and actors were paid well, allowing them to be financially stable. However, streaming has disrupted that compensation structure, resulting in actors and writers now being paid significantly less each time an episode of the show or movie is viewed on a streaming service. This has not only caused financial instability for both writers and actors, but has also devalued their work. Rapid technological advancements in generative artificial intelligence and AI tools such as ChatGPT are quickly proving that they are existential threats to writers and actors. Writers have expressed credible concerns that producers will use AI to write scripts or complete screenplays. Actors have also highlighted concerns that AI would permit producers to use their likeness in perpetuity, avoiding the use of real-life actors. The WGA and SAG-AFTRA have made reasonable recommendations to the AMPT regarding consent, compensation, and protections related to the use of AI, which have been rejected. We believe that demands put forward by both unions are not only reasonable but achievable. We all know that writers and actors are overwhelmingly responsible for many of the shows and movies we love. The AMPTP cannot continue to ignore the needs of workers just to appease its shareholders. Workers have a right to equitable pay and safeguards from unregulated rapid technological advancements that threaten their livelihoods. I would less like to close by stating that the New York City Central Labor Council, AFLCAO, and our 275 affiliates representing 1.3 million workers in this city welcome the opportunity to work with you in supporting the WGA and SAG-AFTRA, and we look forward to collaborating with the city council on the most effective strategies to support our fellow union members, and thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a few questions for the panel, but I want to recognize our colleagues from the committee who have joined us: Councilmembers Hanks, Felice, Nurse, Caban, Botcher, Joseph, Dinowitz, and Councilmember Moya on Zoom. So I have a question that I wanted to ask. So the last writer's strike was 15 years ago. How has the industry evolved in that time? Can you walk us through what that evolution looks like?
I'll take a crack and then defer to my colleagues who've been working in the industry. But 15 years ago, we thought, well, what's this thing called the internet? We called it new media, and we went on strike to get terms covering work created for the internet and work reused on the internet. We called it new media. It's still called new media, but it is the dominant media right now. What has happened in the past 15 years is this thing that seemed to be potentially disruptive has completely disrupted the entire industry, and the business models have changed in the ways that we've described in our testimony. The other thing that has happened, frankly, is just an enormous concentration of power on the other side of the table. The media companies have morphed into multinational conglomerates, and big tech companies are media companies. So we have to exercise that much more leverage just to get a seat at the table and get our voices heard.
I want to mention the decimation of residuals, because this is true for our actor colleagues as well. In that time, we have seen the checks that we used to receive for our work continuing in success, both as movies, perhaps shown overseas, or as broadcast television shows when they are shown on cable and other outlets. We would receive these checks that would help us to survive during the slow periods. And there are always slow periods, because jobs like ours do not last. We do not get... And you elected folks would be well familiar with this. You have to win your job again and again and again, and that's how actors and writers work. So we would get these checks that would pay our rent, that would pay for our groceries in between those jobs. That has gone away. If you ask any of the people here, they will show you a check that they have received for three cents, for two cents. It is unbelievable that these companies will continue to even print and mail these checks for stamps that cost more than the check value itself to us. It is an insult, and it must be changed.
Thank you. It is an insult. I agree with that statement. So since the strike began, what steps... Can you describe what steps, in your opinion, the AMPTP has taken to negotiate with WGA representatives?
None.
None.
None. Complete silence. We're ready to pick up the phone right now. They have completely stonewalled us.
How has the strike put an economic strain on your members? Can you describe what your members are going through in this moment?
So this is three months, again, 14 weeks, 90-plus days. Now, we are approaching 100 days next Tuesday, that our members have gone without an income at all. So imagine that for yourselves. Imagine going three months without a single check coming in to help pay for your kid's clothing, to help pay for groceries that you put on the table, pay for any bills at all. Our members are suffering. They are out there every single day on the picket lines. We had a period where we were shutting down production, so they were out at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, again, without pay, without any form of compensation whatsoever. It is a tremendous hardship for all of our members. It is now a tremendous hardship for the 160,000 members of SAG-AFTRA as well, and we only wish to go back and negotiate. That's all we're asking for, is for them to come and engage with us on the proposals that they have had before them since May 1st, since May 1st, and have not engaged on.
Can you walk us through, for the record, we've heard some of it, but can you walk us through what are WGA's key concerns with the contract that has been offered at this point by the AMPTP?
Well, the most important proposals have to do with the fact that the business model has changed, so the ability to sustain a career has been undermined. So we have proposals to deal with staff size. Make sure that there's enough people actually working so that they can earn a living. To make sure that the pay rates are high enough so that even with shorter seasons, you can actually earn a living. To make sure that, definitely to Lisa's point, to make sure that the residuals are sufficient in the streaming world. To make sure that the periods of employment are not so short that they are meaningless. And yes, to make sure that there are guardrails around AI. The threat of generative artificial intelligence is very real. It doesn't necessarily mean that a robot's going to write an Academy Award-winning script, but it will devalue our members' work. Now, those are the core proposals that the companies have simply refused to budge on. In fact, with respect to all the sort of career basis proposals we made, they said, "We're not going to talk to you about anything anymore unless you withdraw those proposals." That's not going to happen. They have to talk about all of them.
Yeah. That doesn't seem like good faith. So I do have a question for Vinnie Alvarez. The prolonged production shutdown threatens to cost New York City tens of thousands of jobs this fall. The entertainment industry employed 101,000 people in New York City last year. What is the strike's economic impact on the city?
Well, look, I think when you look at economic impact, it's true. You can look at the statistics that you just pointed to and the loss of the jobs and the loss of economic impact. But I think you also have to look at what is the economic impact on these writers and these actors if they don't take a principled stand to defend the jobs and defend the livelihoods as they know them. What happens when even more actors can't access affordable health insurance through their union? What happens and what's the economic impact if writers can't pay their rent due to a lack of work? What happens to our economy when these artists can't rely on the residuals that take them between jobs? And what happens to... Not only our city's economy and the entertainment sector, but other industries, too, when artists and other workers are replaced by AI and thousands of workers are no longer needed? So I think we have to take the long view here as well when we're looking at these two sectors and these two strikes, and understand that there's an economic impact certainly with this strike, but that these issues, that they extend just beyond these two disputes, too. And I would approach it and ask you all to think about it from that perspective as well.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for coming out today and for your testimony. We look forward to passing these resolutions in support of your industry. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to turn to Councilmember Farias, who is the co-sponsor of today's pre-considered resolution in support of SAG-AFTRA.
Thank you so much, Committee Council, and thank you, Chair de la Rosa. I'm proud to see that the city council continues to show unwavering support and solidarity for the union members of this city and across the country. Before I was elected as council member, I worked with the Consortium for Worker Education for four years, building career pipelines for low-income New Yorkers of all ages to have access to unionized jobs, because through that access, people were afforded living wages, health care, financial savings, pensions, and career advancement, all while building and advancing career. Right now, our country is witnessing the film and TV industry's first industry-wide shutdown in 63 years. This historic strike that is taking place all across our city highlights the important need for the industry giants to acknowledge the ways our society and economy have changed since the COVID-19 pandemic, and how their workers deserve to be safeguarded and applauded for their adaptability and commitment, not disregarded. We see the parent companies of these films and shows as consumers we all enjoy, making billions of dollars a year, but yet the faces and the writers of those productions we do not get to see are not even making a living wage. In the Bronx, I get to represent a production studio, York Studios, and as Chair of the Committee on Economic Development, I've seen what economic drivers we can get from this industry to our cities. But it is nothing without all of the workers. We want a fair and protected, equitable workplace for everyone, and that is why Chair de la Rosa and my council colleagues and I have made it a priority to hear our two resolutions today. Thank you all for joining us, and I look forward to continuing to listening to testimony.
Thank you. Now, for the second panel, I'd like to call Rebecca Damon, Ezra Knight, and Fran Drescher to testify. You may begin when ready.
Now? You'll be sorry.
Okay. Well, hi, I'm Fran Drescher, and I'm the president of SAG-AFTRA. And I want to thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you today. As you can tell from my malefuous accent, I am a New Yorker, born and raised. As a kid back in Flushing, Queens, I always dreamt of becoming a professional actor and becoming a member of the Screen Actors Guild, to be a part of the show business community and make a career out of my craft and my God-given talent was my ambition. But I never imagined that show business, which was so romanticized in the old movies of the '30s and '40s, would in 2023 become a soulless business of greed and disrespect for the performing artist. The AMPTP has so radically changed the business model that a new structure of the contract is demanded. We can no longer live on the old residual model. Yet, we were stonewalled when we said that we have to follow the money in the new model. How is anybody going to make their medical coverage when they are making 2/3 less residuals with this new business model? The answer is, they can't. How are working people supposed to make a living on 2/3 less opportunities to make residuals? How can they think we can accept minimums, which is the equivalent of minimum wage out in the real world? How could they think that we're going to accept their final offer on minimums that in real money is less than 2020? And they want us to take that all the way to 2026? We must catch up with inflation. And where do they have the audacity to want a background performer to get paid for one day, get their likeness scanned, and then they own it in perpetuity? What is going to happen to that worker? We stand on the front line of a workers' movement. This is happening all over and everywhere. I was in my neighborhood back in Los Angeles, and there was a little box floating around, rolling around, making deliveries. And I thought, that used to be a human being on a bicycle. What happened to that person? They are out of a job. We cannot allow big business greed to take away our careers, to take away our livelihoods. The buck stops here. We are at a very serious crossroads. This is a righteous fight, and they are on the wrong side of history. The AMPTP's maniacal corporate culture for greed must stop. Industry profit and doing the right thing on behalf of workers does not have to be mutually exclusive, but go hand in hand as we define the new meaning for success. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on, yeah. I'd like to thank the City Council and the committee for having us here. It's an honor. My name is Ezra Knight. I am a professional actor. New York City is my home. I'm a proud longtime resident of Harlem. I've been able to raise two daughters in New York City, working in this incredible profession that I love, thanks to good union jobs. I have had, and I am a proud union performer, and that is how I pay my bills, how I put bacon on the table, turkey bacon on the table. You'll be a little healthier here. And how I earn health coverage for my family and myself. It's how I earn a pension so I can save for retirement and how I live a decent, middle-class life in the Big Apple. But the possibility of making a good, middle-class living as a journeyman actor in New York City is being snatched away by the greedy corporations who don't see actors as the assets that we are, because they can only see their bottom line. You hear a repeating theme here. Good union jobs, treat workers with respect, and see them as people with agency. The AMPTP doesn't want to talk to us about sharing the profits of streaming or about putting real fences around the use of AI in order to allow performers to say how their likenesses will be used without diminishing the number of jobs available. The AMPTP corporations have no interest in showing their workers any respect. I'm here today as a member also of the SAG-AFTRA TV Theatrical Negotiating Committee, who worked on this contract and these negotiations. I speak to you on behalf also of my fellow union members and alongside our siblings in the WGA. We are all in a righteous, life-or-death fight for a fair contract, which at this moment is nothing less than an existential battle for our place in the future of this industry. We want the AMPTP to hear us loud and clear. Ours is part of an international struggle for fair compensation, of respect for labor. Our support comes from the audiences who are moved by the stories we tell, move to tears, to laughter. We feel our art is important and a necessary element of a society's healthy existence. Our support comes from our fellow members. It comes from our sibling unions, who've shown us incredible solidarity throughout these strikes. And it comes from you at City Hall. And this is why we will continue to fight the good fight. We will continue to make our voices heard loud and clear. We will not lose resolve, knowing, again, that we are on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can hear the applause behind me for these two speakers. Hi there, I'm Rebecca Damon. I'm the Executive Director of SAG-AFTRA New York for Labor Policy and International Affairs. And it is an honor and privilege to be here today with this historic, and we like the word historic in SAG-AFTRA, this historic, first-time, female-majority-led council. It is, yeah, that, people can't help the woo on that one. Being here today with the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, with councilmembers Carmen, Amanda, and all of you, it is like, for me, coming home. This council has stood up for the workers in New York City time and time again, and never more so than today and in this hot labor summer that we're all having. I want to thank you for this resolution, expressing the unwavering support in our pursuit for a fair and just contract. We are grateful to this body, because it has been a supporter of these good union jobs created by the robust film, television, and streaming production sector. And I appreciate the opportunity to give folks in this room and across the city some context on what that looks like. SAG-AFTRA's TV theatrical streaming contracts cover over 200,000 jobs a year for New York performers. That work translates in approximately $1.5 billion a year in covered earnings for New York performers and makes New York City the second-largest global production hub for SAG-AFTRA-covered entertainment after Los Angeles. A recent study conducted by the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment found that the entire film and television industry in New York City is responsible for over $18 billion a year in total wages and over $80 billion in total economic output for the city. New York is also home to the two main exchanges where these two media conglomerates are traded, stocks that in aggregate reflect a total market capitalization over $600 billion. So these studio segments of these media conglomerates are booking annual revenues of over $120 billion as they generate work using our members and the members of the WGA's work and netting profits of over $12 billion a year. These are really fantastic numbers, and I'm so grateful to see them. But you would think that that wave of success could be shared by the workers in these industries. The AMPTP corporations have changed course without bringing their workers along for the ride. The migration to the streaming business model, coupled with the effects of inflation, have eroded the real value of wages under these contracts. The fight for a fair contract is a fight for a living wage. But it is also the fight for agency. With the development of AI, the producers want to be able to use our members' likeness however and wherever they want. As President Drescher said, to be paid for that day of work and then be out of work for a background performer or a day player, that is the loss of being able to do what you have spent your whole life training for. Without that additional pay, without the uncertainty of meaningful consent, we find it unacceptable. We cannot stand by while the corporations use these insidious practices to enrich themselves without regard for the effects on the workers whose faces and voices they want to steal. We know that this body understands the contribution of our 36,000 New York members and our 160,000 members across this nation and around the world. But the cultural effect on this great city and the support that you are showing for SAG-AFTRA members in this fight to get working people across that their city and their contributions matter is valued today. And on behalf of SAG-AFTRA, we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We do have some questions. I'll start off by asking, in 2021, SAG-AFTRA actors made a median salary income of $46,960, which is far below the median U.S. median income. A lot of people were shocked by that number. What retirement plans are available for those actors? What retirement benefits is SAG-AFTRA fighting for? And can we talk a little bit about, you know, people usually think actors, A-list actors, they're making millions and millions of dollars. Can you talk about those workers that are directly living in this reality?
Here we go. I just want to say that when we look at an average salary, that's incorporating a lot of very high salaries that are in the 1 percentile. I just want to put it back into the proper perspective that 86% of our members cannot even meet the $26.5 thousand threshold that would make them eligible for their medical coverage. So 86% is not even making $26.5. So the medium is misleading, because it incorporates a very small percentile of very high-earning performers who actually become the engine that makes everything run. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at. We're fighting for those people, that 86%. And those are the people that bring every scene we see to life. Every piece of entertainment that we see on the big screen or on the television screen is, maybe, has one star in it, and then everybody else is virtually unknown. But they are the edges of life. The very, we are the foundation of this industry. We are the center of the wheel. They cannot do it without us. And the mentality to think that they have to step on us, screw us, compromise us, instead of respect us, honor us, and say, "Thank you, we're in it together," shows a kind of leadership that is no longer acceptable in this moment.
Thank you so much for those comments. It also speaks to income inequality and why that gap continues to widen in our city. We know that the cost of living in our city is sky-high, and we know that communities are being priced out. I want to talk a little bit to AMPTP's rejection of SAG-AFTRA's proposal to implement guidelines around the use of artificial intelligence. We heard a little bit about it in your testimonies. But why are those safeguards around AI so crucial in this fight for your members?
I'd say it's an existential reality. We are aware that AI is something that's been created. We're not denying that fact. We're not eliminating AI. It's not the goal. It's to acknowledge its existence, to put fences around it that are respectful for our members, to see its place and its potential in the creative space that's going to be beneficial to us as opposed to the pattern. It's the pattern that we question that's been so repetitively disadvantageous to us as performers and members. So we see it as this new bastion. Part of the questions around it, it seems to be taken as an opportunity to abuse those privileges and that power that it is advantage of us. So it's something that we take very, very seriously. And I think we've all kind of spoken to it in a way, because that's the new terrain that's going to affect everyone all over the planet. But certainly in our industry, it's a very, very large harbinger of what's to come and what's to protect.
I would simply add that there are two principles of compensation and consent. People should be able to control an actual, meaningful consent around their voices, their images, and likenesses. Unfortunately, this industry has fought in that space. They fought us in Albany. They fought us in Sacramento. There is a prevalence of not thinking that people should have that sort of creative control, that sort of control over the destiny of their own persona. And the other key piece is compensation. And that, for us, is a key issue that must be acknowledged in this negotiation.
It seems to me that there's an opportunity here, given that AI isn't going anywhere and that we have to get used to this new reality, for a framework to be developed, given that you all are back at the negotiating table again in three years. Can you speak to what that framework should look like?
SAG-AFTRA has been involved in something called the Human Artistry Campaign, and that campaign has to do with the entertainment industry, but also deals with the music industry as well. You can look at Human Artistry, the website, to go through the principles. Those principles are very similar to the things that we're looking for in negotiations. If you look at the fact at how much technology has progressed, and SAG-AFTRA as a union has been on the forefront of addressing technology at every turn along the way, whether that's all the way back to the silent pictures when people talked about the talkies, or now. Our National Board firmly understands the change in technology, but also doesn't want to put our heads in the sand around these topics. The technology is moving at a pace that what was issues at the day that they began negotiations, the technology has already evolved. So the idea that we would wait for some period of time, for some three years in order to address these issues, whether that's us or the WGA, that is wholly unacceptable.
Thank you.
I just want to say that when we, I feel like we're at an inflection point here. Just because there are people in Silicon Valley that can, has a kind of a brain that can come up with something, doesn't mean that it's necessarily good to use or incorporate in anybody's business or lives. If there's no empathy that comes along with invention, then we're heading, we are barreling into a world that I personally don't want to experience. Everybody owes it to each other as human beings to think about what the consequence of something may be in the long run, to look down the line. Indigenous people look at seven generations. But in our society, where the bottom line is the bottom line, nobody is concerned about how their invention is going to impact people, planet, and other life on this planet. It's, we are really fast-moving into an insane reality. So I do not accept that we have to accept anything. We have to start questioning everything. And if somebody comes up with something that seems like it's a good idea on the surface, if you don't dig deeper than that, then get out of my way, please.
Thank you. Thank you. It's okay, it's okay. We allow a little rule-breaking here. Okay. So we're going to pass it on to the colleagues who have some questions. Councilmember Botcher, followed by Councilmember Farias.
Thank you so much for being here today. I want to give a special shout out to Rebecca Damon, who's been so communicative and just excellent through this process. And of course, you, President Knight and President Drescher. President Drescher, I represent the neighborhoods of the Village, Chelsea, and Hills Kitchen, Midtown. Midtown, lots of actors.
Them's are my peeps.
Lots of writers. And one thing that they've been complaining to me about, especially since the pandemic started, was self-tape auditions, where an actor has to tape their own, perform a scene, tape it, send it in. Could you tell the public why those are problematic and how that's factoring into your negotiations?
That is a very big part of our proposal package. There's a whole section, and we have experts as part of our negotiating committee that have spent a very long amount of time working on this and on the boots, boots on the ground, speaking to our members about the problems that this poses. And this is something that really kind of birthed out of the COVID crisis, when people weren't going into offices. But then, as per usual, it seemed like, well, if they're willing to do a self-tape audition, we won't have to get offices, we won't have to pay rent, we won't have to sit there and watch all of them, they can just send in all of their videos. And this creates a massive problem because my job is not to be a tech specialist, particularly with our older members that are not tech-savvy at all. I mean, I don't want to generalize, but this is what I'm hearing, that that community has a lot of complaints about that. And there is an impersonalness about trying to put something on tape when in the past we would walk into a room and we could have a conversation, and it was human. We would engage another human being. That has all gone away. Also, the demands have become greater and greater. Do this, do that. Can you do it in this dialogue? Can you do it, you know, can you do 12 pages? Can you memorize it? Can you do it in two different accents? And it's like, it's gone so far in the wrong direction that it has to have, again, just like with AI, barricades put around it, and there has to be a happy medium, or we want to get paid for it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Farias?
Thank you so much. I just have a question about, what do you think about the AMPTP's role should be in addressing the discrepancies between these multi-billion-dollar streaming services and the actors who help generate these profits? I'm hearing a lot of different things around how we continuously are the ones generating the profits and moving the items forward, but obviously, we're not seeing it back, and that is the gist of the fight here. And I just want to hear your thoughts if possible.
Well, they're both looking at me, so I'll speak. I think that there is, that they are profit-making machines. But when the success is of the CEO is completely tied in with the success that he generates on Wall Street by 400% bonuses, some of them make $78,000 a day and are accusing us of being unrealistic in our asks. Talk about tone deaf. So there is obviously money there, but there is this culture, this greed-based corporate culture to try and squeeze us out of every last nickel so that it can show as more profit in the minds of the shareholders. The whole culture is what needs to change because we're too foundational to their business model. It's completely counterintuitive to try and screw those that are the foundation of your business model. We're not grapefruits growing in an orchard. We're people. We are artists. We make massive contributions to this industry. We have to be thought of as a partner. I'm not counting your shekels, but cut me in, for God's sakes.
I have an additional thought I just, last night, not to be too tangential here, it's actually on point. I was watching air about Michael Jordan, and the gumption of him, his family, to ask for a percentage of each sneaker sold with his name on it was unthinkable. It was unrealistic. It wasn't how the business model worked, it wasn't how the profit system conducted itself. But the ask and the bold, courageous move to ask for that and to actually get it, we're Michael Jordan. It is our name, our face, our likenesses on these products. We should get a percentage of that. One of Fran's biggest heroic asks was about the streaming-sharing profit system that we should be a part of. We should have a piece of the successful streaming content that airs, and we should have a part of that cut because it's there to be had.
Revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing.
Of subscription.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your responses. I do think like this is just so reminiscent of every single union fight that we have. It's capitalism at its finest. You have someone that doesn't want to really break down their shares and wants to keep having more shares. So I appreciate all of you being with us and testifying today.
Yeah, there's such a thing as conscious capitalism, and that's what capitalism has to mature into. Otherwise, it's going to self-destruct because it's unsustainable the way it is now.
Hundred percent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much to this panel.
Thank you. Are we excused?
Yes. We are going to pause here and prepare for a vote on the two resolutions before continuing with public testimony. I'm going to turn to the chair for her thoughts, and then we'll transition to the vote.
Thank you. We want to thank the WGA and SAG-AFTRA members for their valuable testimony today. Striking writers and actors are not just fighting for their own livelihoods, as you heard today, but against the displacement of workers in their fields. Countless workers, from warehouse employees to retail cashiers to computer coders, fear that their jobs will become obsolete due to the development of artificial intelligence. It is incumbent upon government to regulate the extent at which automation and artificial intelligence displace human labor. Today, the city council stands with the WGA and SAG-AFTRA by uplifting their campaign to protect workers. I proudly support today's resolutions, and I will turn to the clerk to call the roll.
Good afternoon. William Martin, Committee Clerk. Roll call vote Committee on Civil Service and Labor. Both items are coupled. Chair De La Rosa.
Aye.
Moya. Councilmember Moya.
Okay. Yeah, if you send me those things, I'll get it over.
Councilmember Moya, we will come back. Thank you. Dinowitz.
Sorry.
One more time, Councilmember Moya.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute. I vote aye.
Thank you, sir. Dinowitz.
Aye.
Feliz.
Proudly vote yes. And for everyone who has joined today, I want to thank you all for fighting for what's right. Thank you.
Botcher.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Hanks.
I vote aye.
Joseph.
I vote aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye, and congratulations.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and no abstentions, both resolutions have been adopted by the committee.
Y'all could clap.
All right, we'll continue with public testimony. We're going to continue with public testimony. I'd like to call on Louis Edward Thompson, Rao Rampey, and Leila Johnson and Shadé Bass to come up and testify. You may begin when the sergeant starts your clock. Identify yourself.
My name is Rao Rampeyla. I'm a member of SAG-AFTRA. I'm a full-time actor, working actor. I used to be an international lawyer with five law degrees, worked for the United Nations Legal Office. After 9/11, I became an accidental actor. But because of the fight they fought in 60s, I was one of the beneficiaries. So now comes the turning point. We all suffered a lot during the pandemic. Residuals were almost nothing. They were getting some, but not like it used to be. Now comes the AI and other things like they spoke earlier. The reason I'm saying is, I just want to tell my personal story. To me, arts and civilization is the superstructure. Economy is the base. In a way, artists, writers, actors, in this capitalist society, we are the vanguard. And we are giving a warning to the other people where it might go. Today, it is us. Tomorrow, it will be everyone after you. What if they scan a council member, decide what the council member may think, and decide on what, what if? I mean, I used to, I live near the United Nations. I used to work 9:00 to 5:00. I used to have good insurance, health insurance. Now, you don't qualify for Medicaid, and you don't get SAG insurance. Where are you? We are not beggars. Artists are not beggars. We didn't come here today to beg anyone. We came here to demand. So what is profit? Profit is surplus labor. It's not somebody's money. It's the labor accumulated by stealing from people like us. And there is no, there's nothing in the Constitution says this is a capitalist society. So it's, but it's been evolving. I'm not here to talk about it, but this is what is going on, like our leader said, it's going to affect everyone. We are the beginning. So we are giving a warning as a vanguard. Common people, working people, picking up a guardrail may not be able to think, but we are there in their shoes now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bethany Leila Johnson. I am a proud SAG-AFTRA member. I'm also a former council liaison. For 14 years, my mother was the city councilwoman for the city of East Orange, and I'd just like to take a moment. Lieutenant Governor of New Jersey, Sheila Oliver, she ran her office, so I know where many of you sit. I live in Soho. I have been fighting to keep my apartment. It is a joint-living work quarters for artists. I am one but three artists in a 13-unit apartment building, yet they hold JLWQA status. This is something the city council needs to look at because many of us sitting in this room today qualify for that housing, yet it has been absconded, not only by millionaires, but by the many corporate giants who would like to scan us and take our image, reuse it countless times. This is something that this council can pass up and act on actively. I've reached out to the Public Advocates Office in assisting and helping me keep my home and keep an income while we fight this fight. I'm on the picket lines every day, and I hear various stories. And while we discuss AI, let it be known that we have been living and working with green screens since as far back as Forrest Gump. We know it has a place in this industry. But for us to be recycled and reused for nothing, for one day's pay, is unconscionable when we bring over $500 billion to the United States economy alone. We create worlds for people. The epic shows such as Blue Bloods, Law &amp; Order, and New York Undercover that created the economy or the boost to the entertainment economy in New York City should never be overlooked. Not the people, not the guest players, not the day players, and the, what we would call background or extras. We all create that world happily, proudly. There is not one of us sitting here that does not want to be working right now. There is not one, one of us that would say that we would rather be in 90-degree heat rather than being 90-degree heat on a set. But also, while we are negotiating, it is AI, it is healthcare. I have been on sets where we are, there is no requirement for someone like me to have to be in an intimate scene to be protected. There are children on set that need to be protected, and all of this is being negotiated by our negotiating team. But I feel the messaging about AI is being pushed forward rather than healthcare, access to food, access to chairs, access to the minimal working conditions that the companies or studios, production companies feel themselves absolved from actually, you know, providing to us, including a livable wage. Remember, 86%, and I am one of them, live below the poverty line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we go. Thank you for having us here. My name is Louis Edward Thompson, and also people have nicknamed me the Celebrity Waiter. I used to be a waiter at TGI Fridays. As a matter of fact, straight up the block from Rockefeller Center, 14 years. It's amazing because one day we were in a bus stand, and my fellow coworkers were talking to me, and they said, "We've seen a lot of stuff, man. You're a celebrity." And I go, "No, I'm not, guys. I'm doing background work. I'm trying to make things happen." They go, "Louis, you're a celebrity." It took them a couple of minutes to convince me. I'm a celebrity. And as they nicknamed me the Celebrity Waiter, I speak to you as a celebrity, and I speak to all those studio executives. I've met people like that. I went to school with them. I went to college, grammar school, high school. I hung with them. I got stoned with them. I got drunk with them. But in all that time, I was always listening because that's what my two black parents taught all seven of their black children, listen and learn. My skin does not make me up. I do. But my skin is important, just like white people, just like brown people, just like Asian, Native American Indian. We're all in this together. I'm surprised at the greed of the corporate people right now. They should be spreading the wealth a lot more. Why? Because with AI done, and we saw this as children, when we read comic books, when we saw science fiction, when we spoke among ourselves, we knew this was coming. Apparently, a lot of people did not. Well, it's here. It's the 21st century, and now it's here, and we better watch out. They particularly better watch out. And why? Because it doesn't matter. AI is a damn good thing. It's a good tool, but it can also be used for evil. I've seen it. I've seen the geniuses out there. They know what they're doing, but they're also good people who are geniuses and know what they're doing. So I have a warning for the studios and all those rich people out there that think that they have so much. I also work on the elections too, so I'm getting my hands on just about everything. I have a warning for all of them. They may think that they're in charge, but they're not. They're going to lose all of their money one day because it's very possible. because it's very possible to take it away from them. I've seen it. I worked on Wall Street also as a securities clerk and a foot messenger, and I've hung with a lot of people and partied with a lot of people. This is my warning to them. I thank God for this and Fran and everybody here, but my warning to them is, and if you'll excuse me, karma's a bitch. What goes around comes around, and when it comes for them, it's not going to be very good because they won't know how to handle it. I've also worked on yachts. They're nice, it was fun, but I don't want to own one. All I want to do is pay my bills, make a lot of money, be happy like everybody else here, and get the speaking parts. I want the speaking parts. I need them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you.
May I just add, there's one line that's stuck in my head. It was written by a writer on a television show called Network before I was born, 1976. I'm mad as hell, and I'm not going to take it anymore.
Thank you.
Our last panel will be Jackie Roth, Rocky Bonfield, Jenna Cray. Hi, we'll call the names again. Jenna Cray, Jackie Roth, Rocky Bonfield. Please identify yourself and begin when ready.
Hi, my name is Rocky Bonfield, and I'm so nervous to be up here and to be speaking. I felt compelled to speak just because my SAG-AFTRA card says that I've been a member since 1974. And I've been a performer before that, since I was four years old. And at that time, I don't believe there were child labor laws. And if there were, my family didn't, you know, abide by them. So I didn't see any income from when I worked. And honestly, the entertainment industry is the one good thing that was in my childhood. And I have never left the entertainment industry. I've worked behind the scenes, I've worked as a dancer, I've done stunts. I have a degree, a master's degree in theater. I've done theater, I've done every aspect of this in this entertainment industry. And at one point, I don't know if people remember this, but SAG-AFTRA, they were two different entities. So I belong to SAG-AFTRA, I belong to AGVA, I belong to Equity. So, and you had to reach that minimum that they're talking about in each one of those things. But I would go from Equity to AFTRA to SAG. And so there was no way I could ever meet, you know, those, the bar would keep getting raised, and I could never meet it. And at some point, it gets very discouraging. And in, when I was very young, I was in a movie, Walt Disney. Disney seems to be a theme here. But I was in a Disney movie called Pete's Dragon, and I was one of Pete's friends. They have a schoolyard, they have, and I danced, and I did, I was in a harness on the top of a sail, which is now considered stunts. But what's happened through the years is that children at that age, doing that film, I haven't received a dime of residual. Do you know how much money that film has made? I, not a dime. And that's just one of, one of the examples. But also, as an actor, we're being asked to do stunts. We're being asked to, as, not even as an actor, as a background performer. We're asked to do things that are impossible, and because of how I was raised, I will do whatever you ask me to, for free. And this is why this needs to be addressed now. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me now? Hi, everyone, my name's Jenna Cray. I have been a member of SAG since 2021. Started out as a background actor, and I've worked on three HBO shows now, NBC, Showtime, and it's been a great come up during a weird time. And I was in my first Netflix film. It was very meaningful to me, based on my favorite book. We filmed A Few Streets Over from Where We Are Today on Broadway. It was the day after my birthday. What a dream come true, right? It was also a tough day because the book is about being a survivor of sexual assault, and I was a survivor myself. It's emotional to do roles like that and share in that part of your artistry, that part of yourself. I also found out on my way to the job that my grandmother had passed away. I knew that I would likely be replaced, or the part would be cut from the movie, so I made the uncomfortable choice to work that day. It was pretty unbearable. The movie came out, the movie was in the number one spot for quite some time. There was a posting that had been watched for over 43 million hours in the first week, just the first week. So that's about a two-hour movie, so over 2.2 million people had seen this. And these are the kind of numbers that we never see. That's the crazy part about a lot of this, is we don't even understand the scope of which we're being perceived. They don't even want us to know those numbers because then we'd know how much we're really getting screwed. So I saw that number, and I broke it down, and I was like, dang, like this residual, it might be, it might be okay. I got it, it was late also, summed up to about $200. And that's probably the biggest one I'm going to see. I made $200 to work on the day my grandmother died, and I just wonder how much they made that day. Also, the crazy thing about that is I started as a background actor. And if they had the money to turn me into an AI, which I don't think anyone even really wants, like there's nobody who's like, hey, like Bob Iger, like, can you make actors like a little bit more like robotic and like weird? Like, that's what we really want, like, no one's even asking for that. So like, what a weird idea in the first place. Sorry. But if that had been the case, and they took my image, like, okay, how do I move up from that point? How do I go from co-star to guest star? Do you own, do you own me forever, and then you can just do whatever you want with me? And then me as a real person never gets to move up and make choices? It eliminates the ability to move up in this industry, and that's another reason it's really important. Thank you for taking the time to listen today. I appreciate it, and I appreciate all of you. I'm so proud of all of you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
One more time, I'm just going to call Jackie Roth, see if she's in the room and available to testify. Okay, I'm going to, Chair De La Rosa is going to give her concluding thoughts.
Well, I want to thank you all for coming out today, for, to my colleagues for standing in solidarity. We are here because this council understands the value of the work that you bring to our city. We value the work of the Writers Guild of America and your members. We value the work of SAG-AFTRA and your members, and we stand as a council prepared to pass this resolution this week in support of a thriving New York City and a thriving workforce. So thank you so much for being here, and we look forward to celebrating your victory pretty soon. Thank you.